The meeting is called to order. Would you please take a moment for silent prayer or reflection? Terry.
Archana Elia.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Here.
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
Kathy Clark.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session?
So moved.
Seconded.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Archana Elia.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen.
Yes.
John Mastin.
Yes.
Kathy Clark.
Yes. Mrs. Asire.
Madam President, members of the board. This session is based on our progress to date in pursuing the revisions of our family life education policy. We did request, and people did comply, with providing information for our board meeting for tonight, as the board had agreed that before we move forward with a revision that we should define what sex education will mean for our district and what it will not mean. That would be the basis for pretty much everything that we do moving forward, including the revision of the policy, considerations for curriculum, et cetera. And so we have, and this was distributed to the board, and we have it available to go up on the screen. There we go. The paper that was given to you, and I believe you have a hard copy at your table as well. And so we did have several proposals for a recommendation for a definition. And you can see those. We have three that were proposed by board members and one that was proposed by a community member. And like I said, the wording on those, this is for your discussion. The one thing that was unique about the community member, based on our discussion, was we had talked about what it will mean and what it will not mean, and that particular individual also made some suggestions about how we should state what it will not include. So this is an opportunity for the board to discuss and perhaps come up with a definition for sex education for Lake Havister Unified School District.
Okay. And so we don't have much attendance yet. I'm not quite sure why, but we will have public comments. Right now, the agenda for this board meeting is to come up with a definition of sex education, and then we will work on survey questions and the format of the survey for the community. So after we, you have heard the board discuss the definition of sex education, and perhaps if we can come to some consensus, I'm not sure, but we'll discuss it, we'll each speak about it, and then we'll open that up for public comment at that time. When I realize that, I see that we have enough people in the audience who might want to speak, I will say this all over again, just so you know. All right. The definition of sex education, and I know all the board members have read the different definitions, would anyone like to get started?
I will. I think that, I think that after just further thinking, I think it might be premature to even down, up. I think it might be premature to even come to a consensus on a definition of what sex ed is going to mean for our district. We're not even, as a board, we're not even reviewing all of the same material. We're not, we don't have any standard understanding of what's going to be pushed into our schools based on what's available in a, you know, boxed version of curriculum. And if we're going to ask for our community to tell us what they're thinking, what's important to them, how are we going to define that before we even get feedback on what that's going to mean?
Okay, anybody else?
I'm just trying to think through it logically, and it just doesn't make sense to me that we're going to come to a definition before we've considered things that we need to consider.
Are you talking about the community survey?
No, I mean, it's a board on the impact of what a program is going to mean.
Okay. My thought about that would be if we could come up with the things that we would like included in a sex ed program and not included, that at some point, if there is a program out there available, or we do our, create our own program, that at least we would have a list to start with that we had already come to an agreement about that we, that goes in there. Now, if there's a boxed program somewhere out there, then my idea would be that we would just use parts of it. We could either tell the publisher we only want this, 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 and this, or we could go through and mark out sections of it, which are not to be taught. But I think it's important that we come up with something tonight. I mean, this is kind of a start, and things will bounce off of this meeting tonight, I think. People look at the video, and more people show up tonight. We just have to have a start, I think. Anybody else?
Well, I think we, I think we do have a starting point. I think we have some definitions up here that we could review and kind of discuss. It actually is kind of nice that it's a smaller meeting because that might give us the opportunity to feel like we can speak a little bit more freely. But we have some things on paper that we could actually look at and talk about. My concern about delaying things is that we have a whole class of ninth graders right now who, in an ordinary year, would be receiving some sex education in the spring. If we keep pushing this back, there might be an entire class of students that goes this year without receiving any instruction, and I think that that would be overall not a good thing.
Have you reviewed the curriculum that our ninth graders have used for the past however many years? Have you come in and reviewed that?
No.
Okay, so why are you concerned about what they're going to miss?
Because I want them to have some general instruction about sex.
You think these kids are clueless, and they don't have general instruction about sex and how to protect themselves?
It kind of depends. Now, I did speak to one of the counselors in the high school, and she was saying, when they have a student who comes into her office and says, "I think I might be pregnant," the first question that they ask them is, "Why do you think that?" And she said that based on the answers that they sometimes receive, it exposes profound ignorance on how the human body works. And so I think just assuming that kids do know about sex, just because there is a lot of information out there, doesn't mean that they necessarily can weed out what, which of those sources is reliable. And I think our district is in a position to be a source, one source, hopefully in cooperation with their parents, to be a source of trustworthy, reliable information.
I wouldn't disagree with your thought process, but we have been bad stewards of what we've been entrusted with within our community. We were told under state law how we were supposed to do it, and for years, we did not. We've subcontracted it, we have no publishable working copy of the curriculum to show parents, we're in violation of state law, and it's a problem. We need to solve the problem. Now, we're down a path that I don't necessarily agree with. I think, quite frankly, that what we should be doing is we should be looking at the policy and the regulation, updating the regulation to conform with state law at this point, and looking at curriculum in a much similar, in a very similar way that we are right now. Do I think that we're going to have that prepared for ninth graders this spring? I don't think so. And shame on us. I mean, we're the ones that did this wrong as a district. Shame on us. We don't even, Lisa, we don't teach in fifth grade, we don't teach half of the, half of the elementary schools the basic biological material. We have nothing in the middle school, and we have a program in the high school that we violated state law with. We, as a district, made a mess of this, and we owe our community long term, regardless of the cost to a set of ninth graders. We owe our community long term to get this right and to do the right things for our students, our parents, and our community.
So what do you suggest we do, John, then?
I think that whether we use this to formulate policy and curriculum or just curriculum, I think the exercise is valuable. I think that we should at least have some level of discussion about what's on the board tonight. I don't believe that the board is united in its view, and I think that we're going to have problems getting to an absolute majority in this. I think that it's going to be a little bit splintered, and I think it's going to be a little bit contentious as we get into this. And it kind of probably should be. We're talking about sex, and sex is not one little biological function, as much as we would all love it to be. Everybody's got a different take, a version, a thought process about sex and what it means to them as an individual. And we're crossing into bedrooms and doing all sorts of things where I really think government has no place, but we probably need to do something for our community. Because of that, I look at a word medically accurate, just as a, for instance. I disagree with using medically accurate in the definition. Now, that appears in state law, and I give the state their due on that. But medically accurate means that John Money was right when John Money turned around and said to the young man who, young man's parents who was circumcised and damaged badly during the circumcision that you should raise him as a girl. That young man, who was born in 1965, grew up and killed himself at the age of 38 because he couldn't sort the sexuality problems out in his life. I think when we get to medically accurate, there are lots of instances like that in medical history. Medically accurate, by the way, would also include psychology or psychiatry. And the DISM, I believe, is open for change here in the near future for multiple genders and things of that nature. So medically accurate opens the door to a lot of things that perhaps a parent wouldn't support, or perhaps a community member wouldn't support in their thought process. I really, I really don't like medically, nor do I like relationships. I don't think that we should be teaching about relationships. Now, does that mean we don't teach you how to protect yourself in certain situations on a date or in a certain situation in life? No. But we shouldn't be putting the word relationships in a policy. I'm 180 degrees out from that. I think we need to be very scientific in our thoughts. I think we need to be very practical in that we're teaching more along the lines of mechanics and disease prevention and the basic information they need to move forward in any scenario. And we should be keeping the fine pigeonhole things out of it. That's my two cents. But I really think that we could, we could do a policy revision, hone in on the actual curriculum, and I think we can solve this. Is it going to be quicker? No, but it would get us a policy on the books that we could move off from and move towards an actual curriculum, whether that be a boxed product or something we create internally or wherever that discussion goes.
I think that we're being very narrow when we talk about sex education. I tried to recall when that first came into our district, and I recall now that a group of mothers, I think one of them was Dr. McAndrew's wife, Kathy McAndrew, they came in and asked the board to please do something and provide a sex education program because at that time, the pregnancy rate at the high school was very alarming. And so it was a very contentious board meeting, but the board did pass finding a program, and this was the program that was found, the one that we have been using. And then STDs were added. That became a new emergency, a new concern. The more I thought about this is that this, that what is the purpose? What is the, why are we, why are we doing this? The pregnancy rate now of the kids, the girls, it's fallen dramatically. The girls are still getting pregnant. But I think that really the reason that we are doing this is that we are trying to support parents in their goal of raising their children to become healthy, happy, and responsible adults, so that they can meet their goals that they've set for themselves. And we do a lot of goal setting, I know the high school does a lot of goal setting with their kids anyway, and help them navigate life's challenges. And being a teenager, whether you're talking about sex and relationships or just being a teenager, period, it's, you're navigating life's challenges there. So my thinking on this is that we should put it under an umbrella or a framework of, quote, "becoming a responsible adult." And that's something we do all the way through, first grade, second grade, bring your papers signed back to school, do your homework, turn it in. Don't, I mean, tell the truth. We're always teaching responsibility. And I see that by the time the kids get to fifth grade, that when we have been introducing puberty to half of them anyway, that that's a perfect place to talk about, begin talking about response, the responsibility of becoming an adult. And that we're talking about hygiene, deodorants, cleanliness, and health there. And putting it into something, because I'll tell you about in fifth and sixth grade, it starts where kids really are interested in becoming an adult. They want us to treat them like adults, they want to be an adult, and by the time they get to high school, they really want to be an adult, but they don't know what that looks like. And I would like to keep emphasizing that to them again and again and again, that becoming an adult is learning how to, is gaining self-control over yourself with your emotions, leading with your head and not with your feelings and these urges that these kids are having now that they're in high school, and Nicole's right. The kids are very aware of their feelings, their sexual feelings and their urges. And that, one of the things I was impressed with, with the program we were doing, is it really helps kids understand about the decision, that you're making, you're making a decision. If you have sex, you have made a decision, but have you thought about your goals? They do a great job. What are your goals? They ask the kids. Make a list of your long-term goals, and the kids individually put things like, you know, buy a car, graduate from high school, have, you know, be popular. I mean, they come up with all kinds of things. And then, as the program proceeds, then what happens is that when they talk about getting pregnant, making a decision, or not making a decision, just falling into a situation where a girl becomes pregnant, or there is an STD involved, then the kids are, they talk about, so how is, look at your goals. How is that going to affect your goals? Some of you said, "I want to go to college." How will this affect your goals? And let the kids understand that becoming an adult means gaining control over our emotions, leading from our heads. And I just think it's that kind of thing, teaching the kids what a mature adult, what an adult is. I have great concerns about, somehow we have no rites of passage for our kids in our culture. That's not our fault, it's the culture. You get to be 16 and you get a car. How many kids who drive a car have control over their emotions when they're angry? They get in the car and they go off and with somebody else in the car. They shouldn't be able to do that because they're not mature adults. They've been given a mature thing, the same thing with giving kids guns. When I was a kid, I had my brother's BB gun, and my dad watched me every second. He said, "Look where you're, look, look where you're pointing it." And I mean, I gradually got control, and I was, I started to pay attention to that kind of thing. There are these, these really adult things that we get the kids into somehow, that somehow we allow them to do it. And anyway, what I'm proposing is we frame sex education under the umbrella of becoming a responsible adult. It fits all the way through, and that will ring a bell with the kids when they, this is not about sex, it's about the choices that you make in becoming a responsible adult, and this is what it looks like. So that's where I'm coming from. Anybody else?
I actually agree with all of you. So I agree with Lisa that kids are probably often more ignorant than we think they are about certain things. And I agree with John that we didn't know apparently for such a long time what was going on in our schools. So it does need a big, long deliberation to figure out where we need to be. And again, medically accurate, you know, every human being is different, and there's so many moving parts. What is medically accurate? And at one time, you say, "Oh, this is right." At one time, you say, "This is good for you, that's bad for you." You know, things change. So I agree, medically conforms to general medical principles, but what is accurate? There's nothing accurate in medicine. And I agree with you that we need to give them the instruction or, yeah, as a school instruction, to make the right choices. So to me, I was late in coming up with a definition, but this is kind of what I came up with. Like, sex ed is pertinent information imparted to students to supplement other sources of information on sexuality in order to help them make responsible, safe, and good choices. I mean, it's, this is what I would like to do, give them information, tell them about STDs, tell them about pregnancy, tell them about saying no, about abstinence, all those things.
Okay.
And of course, we have to tell them what are all the options available in the world.
With me, there's some other things, it's really not sex education, but it relates. Things like cyber stalking and sexting. When we first started this program years ago, that wasn't even in the curriculum because we didn't have those particular problems, and now we do. Do the kids know that those are crimes, that they can be arrested for that? Rape, what is rape? A boy, a high school boy, doesn't think he's, this is, I wouldn't ever rape anybody. Does he really realize what the age of the girl he's with? I mean, these kids need to know the consequences. They can make such dreadful mistakes in their lives at that age that will affect them forever if they want to go in the military or even get into college, all kinds of things. I had mentioned addictions, not just drugs and alcohol. And then social media, what that can do to you. And then going back to addictions, it's not only what you put in your body, but what you put in your mind. Being very aware as you go through life that you have to be really careful what you let enter your mind because, I'm not talking about pornography, actually, but I saw a special this weekend on pornography, and I was just surprised that the age of the kids, the boys, when they get addicted, it's between eight and age of 14. I think we have a responsibility to our parents to educate them and let them know that this stuff is out there, and these are the filters that you can put, that these are the restrictions, this is how you put restrictions on your cell phone or on your kid's computer or whatever. And I just don't think they know. And these boys who were interviewed, once they got into that between the age of eight and 14, that was it forever. I just feel like we have a responsibility to let parents know these kinds of things. So it's not just a responsibility to the kids, it's a responsibility to our parents, and there are different ways that we could deliver that. But the kids need to know a lot of it themselves as well.
What do you think about, as far as a definition goes? What do you think about splicing together? I think what John, Mr. Mastin wrote about, well, his entire statement, I think, would be applicable here as a definition. And then maybe a statement at the end, taken from what I wrote, about its purpose is to help young people communicate about and make informed decisions regarding sex and their sexual health. Are there any statements in there that someone finds problematic?
And other aspects of human sexual behavior, I find that extremely problematic and suggestive.
I think that's too vague, I think.
Well, okay, it is a little bit vague. We could maybe tighten it up to, I think that consent is a very important aspect to discuss with kids, especially, you know, as Kathy said, there's, there are certain things that are now criminal behavior that kids might not even be aware that they're doing something.
I know, but we're talking about sex. See, this whole thing was supposed to be purely about sex, and it started because we didn't have a sex ed, and it was trying to protect the kids but also offer parents the resources that they needed to protect their kid, help them have the conversation to make sure that their kids could protect themselves, STDs, pregnancies, et cetera. I think we're forgetting the fact, there was a lot of information provided during that initial phase, and there was a big circus that took place, and we never got to talk about, you know, actually, what we are going to do specifically. What you just talked about is vague. What I sent out from the Cleveland Clinic, that's specific. That's very specific. You talk about kids being ignorant, we can put everything they need to know on one single piece of paper, send them in their registration packets, have them sign it before they ever come back to school, done. Everything that has been provided to me, which is two things, one article, and what else? I had one article that came from Lisa, I can't remember the, oh, from a community member, that was an American Academy of Pediatrics article. Everything cited is before 2006. Every kid in this country has a cell phone, whether they're, you know, strapped for cash in their family or not, they've got a cell phone. And these kids have access, like you were just talking to the porn. So the idea that we have to teach them these very things using a course and time and actual instructors to sit there and get this message across that if you have sex, you are going to get an STD at some point if you're not using protection. If you, you know, you don't need to go into those details in a class form anymore, is my point. And, and we've done a terrible job if we're using all this sex education to justify why we're doing sex education. Pregnancy rates are down, yes, worldwide, they're down. It's not just here in Arizona. But STDs are not down, so we failed. The state has failed. All the resources, money, and time and effort that has gone in to educate these kids so that they don't get an STD has failed. So why would we continue to even discuss buying a boxed program, sex ed, in 2018? And can we please start providing information that's cited with science that isn't 2006 or before? A lot has changed. And we're not even talking about very specific things. We can't even, as a board, get on the same page with certain things like the question that I asked of one of the physicians. You know, is it appropriate, I can't remember how I phrased it, but is it appropriate for a young girl, I can't remember the age, I used eight or nine, to be on puberty blockers? You know, these are real scientific things that are affecting families that are being pushed in our schools. These are topics of conversation. So when we talk about giving medically accurate or lifesaving information to people, we need to be able to have those conversations, but we can't because the science and the experts that I provided to explain it, because I can't, because I'm not those things, was papudous, right-wing lunacy. And then the one document that you provided is all about right-wingers. And it's, I mean, if we can't talk about the truth, we are screwed. And I don't even know if our kids even know what that means. I don't even know if every member of this board knows what that is, or if they can define it for themselves. But, you know, this, this document is one contradiction after another. It is, it is propaganda at its finest, and it's pushed off as science. And maybe you just look things up and shoot them off. I don't do that. I look things up, I read through them, I think about how it's going to be taken, even all the stuff that was so offensive. I thought about how that might come across, but I also thought people will move past that, and they will look at the science, what the experts that are treating these, this particular demographic are saying because of their experience. But we're feeding our kids stuff that is making them angry, and it's not truthful. And so far, the information that I've been provided on this subject from members of this board is propaganda. It's not. is propaganda, it's not real.
I think we need to, you know, first define truth because truth is very diff, the truth that you see and the truth that someone else sees is very different.
Oh, that's not true.
And I do not agree with that at all because there are many numbers cited in that article which make a lot of sense about teenage pregnancy and lots of things. And I don't see, I don't think that it's going to do us any good to discuss what truth is and to say that one person's telling the truth and everybody else is telling lies.
Well, can I ask, Mike found something that was intriguing and I'd like for him to talk about that. Are you willing, Mr. Murray, to, you came across something? You know, we don't have to find a box to set somewhere, we can come up with our own program.
I think that's the only way to go.
Okay.
I don't think there is a box solution. But I want to answer the truth part because even if none of you do, for me, truth is, it conforms to reality and it's non-contradictory. So when I'm reading multiple contradictions within an article, that's not truth. It's not about my feelings. And I disagree with you, Archie, I don't think truth is, you know, your truth is different from my truth. That's not how our society was set up. We have fundamental truths in our society. And if you're gonna, and that's what academia is doing, they're making it own, everybody can have their own truth. Well, then society falls apart and I think that's what we're witnessing with suicides, with the complete dysfunction of our society is because we're not holding true and fixing ourselves to the truth.
Okay, but what I would like to do is, let's just talk about sex education, which is always controversial. People are always going to disagree about what should be taught, what shouldn't be taught.
Because it was based on lies and pedophilia. So yeah, it's a problem. When you go back and you do all the research up through to current, there's problems. Up to the county program. I found a huge problem with the fact that one of the activities in that program that they've been teaching for how long is discussing voting on the merits of family values and teaching kids that you can change your mind, your family values aren't important. Peer pressure works a lot of ways and that's one of them. When you divide a room up into three and you say, if you agree with the merits of these family values, you stand here, and if you disagree, you stand here, and if you're unsure, you stand here. And then you can change your mind? How's that good for our kids?
Well, I'll.
How's that supporting the family?
Well, I'll just tell you that.
That's a breakdown of the family.
I read the entire program and it does get into values. But it does not do it in the way that you just described. It does not try to, it does not try to undermine family values. It's just the kids, different kids have family values and another kid, they don't have the same values. And so then they try to get to the students to say, to be thinking, what do you really, what do you believe? And generally, that's based on your family values, your church. Now it's based on celebrities and all kinds of, it's gotten very complicated. So I'll agree with you there, but I just want to say, I did not find that at all in this program where it was trying to undermine any family's values. I just want to get that out there. So you and I are going to disagree on that, but, so I don't want to keep going into that, but I just had to put that out there, okay?
Well, I read the program.
I did too.
Well, I'm sorry I shared it with our superintendent, so if you don't believe me, I mean.
Well, it's not, neither, that's neither.
It is. See, because, just because you didn't read it doesn't mean that it's not there.
I did read it, Nicole.
But you didn't read the part I'm talking about.
Well, I'm going to go back and look for it.
Well, page 53.
Of Wise Guys?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, thank you. All right, Mr. Murray, could you explain the program that you came across? Or maybe there's more than one?
Well, it's, it's, let me just go back by saying that this is a superintendent recommendation from Tucson Unified School District. They're going through the same thing that this district and many districts throughout the state are going through. He had some core recommendations. They had a governing board meeting on the 10th of September. It was recommended that this conversation or the vote was postponed. And so the direction was given back to the district to come up with recommendations similar to what we're experiencing right now. The superintendent's recommendations talked about a district-wide teach-in, professional development plan, development for an alternative curriculum for those families that opt out. I would say that would be rewarded for those families who do not opt in. Establishment of school contact persons for students in crisis, curriculum formatting and grade level cover pages, and public commitment to prohibit the purchase of outside curriculum or curriculum materials. And there was awarding some information on that by them basically stating that the family life curriculum will be internally developed and will be posted for public review, thus prohibiting the purchase of outside curriculum or curriculum materials. Now, just in listening to the conversation and looking at the agenda, this, I think the community is looking forward to and expecting a survey. And that's what's on the agenda tonight. And I think that's the matter at hand and.
Well, can I ask you, I thought I saw a list of items included, that Tucson came up with its own curriculum. And I saw, I thought I saw Mrs. Sisar hand me, or show me a list of items that they include in their curriculum. I'm just curious if you could read a few off.
So their family life curriculum, I don't have the date on this document, but their family life curriculum includes personal development, healthy relationships, physical development, media and society, personal safety, and sex and sexuality.
Okay.
They're also stating that the entire family life curriculum is taught over a two-week period of time. They offer grade levels, it's a four through 12 curriculum. Curriculum offered in fourth, grades four, five, and six, once in grades seven, eight, and once during high school.
Do they say who teaches it?
The recommendation from the superintendent was that staff would be trained and staff would offer the training, both to parents as well as teaching within the district.
Okay.
Sex and sexuality portion that would begin in sixth grade and progresses through grades seven, eight, and high school. And they do have a comment at the bottom where Planned Parenthood has not been affiliated, involved, or contributed to the development of the family life curriculum.
Okay, and so what they're doing is broader than just sex ed.
Correct. According to this, yeah, they created a fact, just a one-page fact sheet for parents to reference and it's on their website.
So my thought about this is that we have to come up with something. And my thought is that we come up with, I think, starting with John's definition of sex ed, is that then we add some things, subtract some things from that. And at least it's, we need some kind of a beginning point, is what I think. And that's what I would like to do, it's on the agenda. And if we could at least accomplish that, we have to have someplace to start.
Well, I think the survey is fine. I just don't think that you can develop a definition of what you're going to call sex ed before you know what your community wants. So I think the survey is fine, but I think that the questions should be very specific beyond, do you want sex ed or do you not want sex ed? Or do you want sex ed taught at home or do you want it taught in a school? I don't know how you put that, but beyond that, if you're going to ask questions, they should probably be pretty specific questions and they should have nothing to do with the old curriculum. Not a thing. Because that was not our doing as a board and I don't support that. I don't support another, you know, dog and pony show with the county health department, no way.
Okay, would you like to move that we do not come up with a definition of sex ed tonight? And wait until after the survey or?
It's possible action. We don't necessarily have to take action tonight on any of it.
I would say that we talk about actual questions for a survey or the format or whatever.
Well, and I think that part of the, a critical point in that is, when we were talking about the survey, we said we wanted parents to know what we meant when we said sex ed. And so that was the impetus for coming up with the definition. And so if we want to do the reverse of that and develop the definition, then we need to really talk about what questions do we want to ask and get input on about what should be included in sex ed and so that everything is covered. So that would automatically negate some of the questions that were already on there because they were developed with the understanding that sex ed would be defined. So that's my only point on that one.
So do we need to have a motion?
We can move to discussion.
Just discuss, okay? Okay, anyone else thoughts about that?
So did I misunderstand? I didn't think the survey was a parent's survey. I thought it was a community survey.
Parent and community.
Okay, yeah.
It was both.
Okay.
And just because it might smooth the way for future discussions, I did read the article that you sent from Cleveland, from the Cleveland Clinic. That is a reputable source. I liked what that page had to say. And I would be supportive of sex education that addresses those topics. I do think there is value in having kids meet in an actual classroom setting where they feel free to ask questions. It's, I don't, I don't agree with the idea of just sending home a page and having them sign off on it because we don't know what each kid goes home to. And so maybe they have someone that they can ask questions of if they come up and maybe they don't. And so having that take place in a classroom setting is important to me.
I want to make something really clear to start with. I was never against teaching kids or having them be able to ask legitimate questions like this. That was insinuated because of the policy I proposed, but it was never made clear from you, can you put your arm down for a second? It was never made clear from you that I proposed that policy before I knew we had a sex ed. So I've never been against them understanding the risks, the consequences, and getting answers. So if that wants to be developed, fine. But we really are reaching into, with all the other stuff, into the home, into the family, and it's wrong. And we do it under the guise of, well, some kids have a really crappy home life. Well, no kidding, a lot of us sitting in this room did too. So that's not the reason for the government to reach in and try to tell them what a healthy relationship is. To me, a healthy relationship is being honest. I don't see a whole lot of that, even from people that I'm very close to. So it's all different for everybody. So I don't want somebody determining how to teach the kids what's healthy, what's not. The difference or what no means, no means no, yes means yes. But really going off on this consent, I feel like is encouraging. It's really encouraging kids to make sure you know the finer details of how you can exercise your sexual rights. Because that's what we're talking about. All this stuff is rights-based, your rights. I went to all the websites that were listed, I think it was, it was the other article that was attached to Diana's, and I don't know if that came from you or if it came.
Was it the National Institute of Health?
No, no. And that's just a clearinghouse, so I want to make sure that we're, right? Like Dr. Santelli was not an employee of the National Institute of Health, but that's how it was presented. That's just a clearinghouse where lots of people deposit documents on the subject.
They're still subject to the same scientific scrutiny.
Well, I've really tried to narrow that down and that's very subjective as per his article that you sent, but I digress. The article that you sent yesterday, you attached it when you reported. You said Tyneside was American Academy of Pediatrics. So I went to what they referenced at the end, sex, et cetera, yada, yada, yada. And I read through all of that. It's all rights-based, rights-based. I was literally, literally reading on sex, et cetera. How you make an appointment at a clinic and what you have to say to them so that your family doesn't find out and how you, and all these things. And it's like, we're talking about either pregnancy or an STD and you're trying to teach these kids how not to talk to their parents. Why would you do that? Why would that be your marketing gimmick? I have a problem with that. And I know a lot of people in our community have a problem with that. And if parents knew that that's what was being pushed on their kids, they would have a problem with it. But they don't know that because nobody sits and reads through all the fine print to see that this is what's happening. But I'm telling you that's what's happening. Even from reputable sources. I sent Diana a video today and it's, I hope you'll send that out to the board and the directors because it's an endocrinologist that specifically addresses what is happening in the medical community. And maybe this has not been either of your experiences because you're in the medical community. But what he says, well, I mean, the two of you being, you know, in that wheelhouse, you know, you run in that circle, let's say. But what he said is, if you push back, first of all, he talked about how the organizations are run by very few amount of people. So he was, I don't know if he specified which ones he meant, but like the American Academy of Pediatrics. I know there was great offense taken over that, but they have been politicized. That is why the American Academy, or the American College of Pediatricians formed in 2002. Because they were being asked to submit or to agree to things that went against their oath. First you know harm. And they couldn't do it anymore. And you're seeing this. I mean, there's tons of research out there about 501(c)(3)'s being taken over. Medical organizations being taken over for political purposes. But this video is very short, to the point, and it comes on the heels of an article that was just released about 6,000 deaths from Lupron that is being given to young children that have or suffering from gender dysphoria when they're put on a track towards gender-affirming treatment. And it just came out, I think it was yesterday it was published, 6,000 deaths from this drug. We're not, we're not talking about these things, but we're doing it in the medical field. And so I just want to be open when you say that there's missing information, it's incomplete, there's missing information in this whole sex topic because there's a lot more there than meets the eye. It's not just pregnancy and STDs.
Well, the thing is, we have a choice here. We can be very diligent and very careful about what we do. And perhaps that's the road that we should go down. Mr. Masden, would you like to?
Well, and your point is really why we need to be very careful and very limited in what we do. And again, it gets to my, to my point, maybe I'm not saying it right, but this is why you don't want to go beyond certain basic things in these discussions. And again, you're getting to people's home lives, into bedrooms, into things that people have certain preferences one way or another. And we as, we as a school district should not be intruding there. We want to make sure, I believe, that our students are well-informed, have adequate knowledge of disease and prevention, and the basic things that they need to know about sex. Past that, they will more than likely try things, experiment with things, do things in the next 10, 15 years of their lives and they'll figure out what they like and what they don't and what their lifestyle is going to be and so on. But we need to make sure that no matter what that looks like moving forward, that they've got the basic information to keep themselves safe. We shouldn't be treading on any type of a psychology in this. We should be keeping it very tight and very much scientific.
I think we need to focus on the word information. We are not here to provide judgments or direct anyone's opinions anyway. We are educating them, we're an educational institution, I'd say. And we need to provide them with the information. This is what happens if you do this, these are the ways to prevent it. I think that as long as we focus on information and nothing else, that's how we will succeed.
Okay.
I would agree. I'm going to take a couple of things. So, Mr. Masden, I do, I disagree with your, or at least this is what it sounded to me like you were saying, that providing sex education might be seen as intrusive or going into people's bedrooms. I feel like it's, if you're providing information to people instead of collecting it from them, you haven't performed an act of invasion or intrusion. You're offering something that they may accept or might not accept, but you are not soliciting something from them.
Well, but to clarify, the students we teach are. Well, but to clarify, the students we teach are generally under the age of 18, which makes them minors and subject to their parental authority that's over them. When you teach them something that their parent might object to, have you overstepped?
Can you give an example of what that might be? I'm sure that I would...
Let me... So on this, so on, on the list of potential questions, there was an addendum to that, possible survey inclusions. And on the last page, there's a list. And within there, I'm going to say that the parent objects to fellatio and conundrums.
What number is that?
It's at the end of the survey. The third or the last question.
So, so you have a, you have a parent that objects to those practices being taught to children in a classroom. Is that something we should be teaching?
No.
No, but we can control that.
But, well, we can control that. But what I'm saying, when I say narrow and we don't want to intrude on a home or a bedroom, that's really what I'm saying, is we have to, at some level in this, in this procedure, honor the community, the family, and the people that we're going to affect beyond our district because this is something that is more far-reaching than a math problem. This is something that gets into people's homes.
Now let me, go ahead.
Just going back to the community members' submission, one of the things it does is be very specific about what will be taught. So there's no implication when we talk about human behavior. I mean, if, it may be that you want to go towards something that's much more specific and this is what we will teach, and it doesn't include the...
I would agree, I would agree with that thought process.
Ability to interpret, I guess, is what I would say.
Yeah, hard walls to the box.
Now, I would like to give you some little food for thought along those lines. My niece, who's a teacher in another state, told me today, in elementary school, when they provided the sex ed program to their kids last year, there was a little girl who was being molested in the home. I don't know if it was a father or a brother, I have no idea. And she thought this is what normal families did. She had no idea until she had this sex ed program, and they talked about healthy touching and what's not healthy touching and that kind of thing, that she didn't know. I mean, that's the, that's the kind of service education provides our kids who are brought up in those, those homes. And no, you know, we can't save all of these kids, but I think that we need to be aware that those situations exist and think about that when we think of the topics that we have to at least touch upon. Not, not the word you just mentioned, but just the example, just to think about, this will impact homes, you know? So, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to... First of all, the pro-con. It wasn't supposed to say pro-con. It was supposed to say consequences, but I probably copied and pasted that. But my point was, in putting copulation, fellatio, and sublinguism because we're talking about, we want our kids to know how to protect themselves, and those are the three things that they need to know is how that they need to protect themselves.
The STDs.
So if you don't want to talk about those things, what is it that, how are we really teaching them to protect themselves? Was kind of my point in listing it. And I had to go look up the names because I didn't know what to put. So yeah, I, I put that there for a reason. It's like, if you think that our kids need to know these things in order to protect themselves, then those are the things that they need to be aware of, right?
Yeah, but...
You can't be vague about how you catch an STD.
No, but you can, you can frame that in more general terms. This is, you know, the oral, and you can, you can go in the ways that this happens without...
I understand that. My point is, is that's what I mean by specific. We need to be specific about what we're teaching. And if we're going to teach them how to protect themselves, those three things they need to be aware of. Because your sexuality, which way you bend, doesn't matter at all. It doesn't change those facts. So there doesn't need to be specialty education in order to deliver the facts, is my point.
Okay.
When, when you do that, you need to tell people things like HPV can cause esophageal cancer. I mean, you really need to be, be specific and descriptive. And you brought something on the STIs to one of the board meetings several years ago when you were principal of the high school that actually had very graphic images attached to it. And, and I'm, I'm actually a big supporter of this could happen to you. You need to be really careful with this, type of, type of response to those, to those STIs. But yes, we need to let them know. Nothing is safe.
Yeah. And this is all very uncomfortable to either even consider, talk about, but where the limits are within each of these topics, how broadly do we talk about it, how narrow should we be? But I think we've got to figure out, figure out something. So I also like the community members' definition as well. I would just, I would put fifth grade, fifth, seventh, and, well, ninth grade, or just make a range there. But it, again, it's a lot like John's definition. It really limits it to, to certain things.
There may be those things you added or deleted from that, just the idea that it was very specific. Sorry.
No, I...
So a couple of examples of things that I would like, if we do end up adopting that definition, some things that I would like to see included or added to that would be sexually transmitted diseases and their prevention. And I, I really do think that you also have to address the concept of consent. It kind of echoes what Mrs. Cox was saying about how people need to know this is what happens in a, in a healthy relationship, and these other behaviors are things that happen in an unhealthy relationship. And if you are, it's not just that no means no, it's that only yes means yes. And if you are having some sort of sexual activity done to you, but you're not a willing participant, that that's not sexual activity. That is sexual assault or rape, depending on what's happening.
Yeah, but we don't want to wait till high school for that. Like, good touch, bad touch is something that, you know, I taught my kid when she was really little, like three, four. So that's not part of what we're talking about. But, you know, I agree that that needs to be very clear. But again, that needs to come from the parents for the most part.
Well, and some parents never even consider thinking about things like that. We used to have the school resource officers teach that in elementary school when they did stranger danger, and they included good touch, bad touch, and all those kinds of things. I mean, there are other places that we can interject those types of things. But I'd like to make sure they do get interjected. Does anyone know, do we still have the stranger danger program? And the school resource officers do those programs in elementary like we did for years? I have no idea. Well, there'd be something to look into. Oh, okay.
Not in recent times.
I don't know how things, you know, just get dropped, but that's something. And something else, I mean, you know, going back to legal issues, if you want such as cyber stalking, sexting, that kind of thing, and addictions, I would like to see those included.
I think, I think I like the community members' definition. I would agree to add STIs to that. I think it is finite enough to, to lock certain things out, but broad enough to include other things that may come up. I think that if we just, we just add sexually transmitted infections to the, to the end of each one of those lines, and of course, human gestation, birth, and sexually transmitted infections, and then...
Why infections? It's always been STD. Why do you want to call it infection now?
The new term is STI.
Yeah, why?
They are often used interchangeably. I did look it up because I noticed it was mentioned in one of the videos. So there is a difference between an infection and a disease. There are sometimes overlap, but one example that I read was HPV is listed as an infection because that's what it is, but it can also lead to different kinds of cancer. And then that becomes a disease because a cancer is a disease, not an infection.
Oh, we can do both, STDs and STIs, I suppose.
They are, again, in the medical community, they are often used interchangeably.
Right. So what, what do the rest of you...
You can use STD or STI, it makes no difference to me.
What do the rest of you think about just, you know, legal issues, which would then cover cyber stalking and sexting, and, and boundaries? I think that's really important for... I mean, we can be more speci, well, I mean, I'm fine with cyber stalking and sexting and addictions. I mean, that has nothing to do with sex education, but I think these are all related, addictions are, are related.
Well, reproductive health is, is where you're going with that. I believe, and I think that that...
With addictions?
For the addiction part of it, yes.
Oh, really? With reproductive health? Okay.
How is addiction reproductive health?
Pornography.
The pornography.
Which, why, right in the face of reproductive health?
And these kids who get hooked between the ages of eight and 14, according to that documentary that I saw, they're addicted for life. And they're sex, they're really sex addicts, that's what they are. It's a terrible, terrible thing. That's what they become at that age, when they get into pornography at that age.
One concern that I do have with the community members' definition is at the end where it lists out adoption, prenatal, and postnatal health to be included in the sex education. I do think that that would be best addressed through the medical community. I don't think that we necessarily need teachers in there giving students advice about how to handle a pregnancy, aside from if you are pregnant or you think you might be pregnant, go see a doctor, go talk to your parents, that kind of general advice.
That's fine, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I'd, I'd love to see him take and, and keep an egg for several weeks and try and bring it to, to term. The, I was joking around a little bit with somebody I know, and, and it came around to something that happened in his school. And basically what it was, was, was they made them witness a birth. And, and so when I look at that prenatal and postnatal, it's, it's right in the middle of those two, and I, if there's a deterrent, it's right there.
Were you at the high school when the girls had to carry a crying baby, a doll, around for... I don't remember the, the period of time, but they, they did, and the baby would start crying right there. It was really something, it was very effective.
But, but those things are absolute deterrents. Don't get pregnant because this is what you're going to be in for.
Okay.
So as, as you're talking about this, and I'm not sure, because there's been now a lot of stuff thrown in and out, what we actually have. This one particularly says seventh, between seventh and 12th grade. And, and yet I heard that we still need the fifth grade puberty and hygiene. And...
I, I think if I were to target it, it would be five, seven, and nine. Would be the three grades where I would target this into. But I would say fifth, fifth grade to 12th grade would be the spread.
And for us, because of PE in high school, that all students have to take a ninth grade PE, that's a way to get all of them. So it wouldn't be a problem if it were 12th grade. It's just that right now, the way we're arranged, that wouldn't work.
You're going to, you're going to get some of this in science class too, so...
And I like the five, seven, nine distinction. But I do think if you just say fifth through 12th grade, that gives us a little bit of flexibility too.
Okay. Okay, anyone else about what you would like to see or not see?
I don't want to see sex ed in the fifth grade.
Well, that's puberty.
But you know what I'm talking, in the context of what I'm talking about, I don't want to see that move.
No, I agree, but you don't think...
Could you be specific about what we're going to teach at what grade? Because I don't want that in the grade. But I do think it's important that we start educating the parents. That can go home on paper. These are the things that are happening in our needs lives, whether you're aware of it or not, because a lot of parents are oblivious. I was oblivious, come to find out, you know, 10 years after the fact. I didn't know things that were going on. And if technology was the way it was today, I certainly wouldn't know. You know, with the hidden ass behind the calculator and all this other stuff that's happening. But we should be educating the parents. It is their job ultimately to have these conversations with the kids. So anything we could do to make it easier would be really a good thing to do to help develop those conversations between the parent and the child, not the school.
Okay. So then where are we? We're going to take the community members' definition, specifically insert, putting, with puberty and, starting in fifth grade, with puberty in fifth grade.
Puberty and hygiene?
Puberty and hygiene, yes, definitely. And, and we'll add the sexually transmitted diseases. I don't, I really don't see why we need to have adoption.
Well, human gestation and birth is listed, and then reproductive health, pregnancy prevention, then STDs. So did you all, I thought I heard you say you wanted to remove adoption, prenatal, and postnatal health?
That's what I said. I don't know if everyone agrees.
Well, John wants to show a movie of a live birth.
Birth is in the sentence before.
I just think it stops a lot of nonsense.
I bet, I bet you're right.
I don't understand why you wouldn't want that to, that's not talked about. I didn't read about that in the...
What was that?
In the program, adoption. I didn't read about, that's not a normal thing. All we hear about is abortion. We don't hear about adoption. It's abortion, abortion, I have a right to an abortion, so...
Would you like to keep adoption in?
Well, I think it totally goes with, you know, you're talking about pregnancy. You know, thank God none of us were aborted, right?
I think you need to include abortion too if you're going to include adoption.
Which is why I think maybe if you just take out adoption, prenatal, and postnatal health, it kind of sidesteps that landmine and just refers to students to a medical practitioner who can actually help them make a decision.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if I agree with that.
May I ask, in the program, did you see references to abortion in the...
Yes, I did. And actually, they removed it from the program, if you can believe this. It was to deliver it to Diana the night before the August 14th, and I viewed it then. And then Ron Gould was delivered a copy less than a week later, and abortion was taken out. Can you believe that?
So then it's not in the program?
It's in the one that was delivered to Diana.
Okay, but...
Abortion has a value no less.
Well, it might have been taken out because they don't teach it, that they don't use that material here.
Okay. Are you really having this conversation? Within one week it was taken out? One week?
I don't have any information to the contrary.
I don't know.
In, in any case, in any case.
This is what I mean by it's really difficult to have a conversation when we just can't be truthful. I am telling you, the health department delivered the curriculum to Mrs. Snyder. In that curriculum, they listed abortion as a value, as a value, and wanted you to rank it. And then less than one week later, they delivered one of our supervisors his copy. And that was specifically taken out. At Great Lakes, they had to go to, to take that out because it wasn't like a page was taken out, a number was taken out, listing abortion as a value. So you don't have to believe me. Maybe because you didn't see it, it must not be true. But I'm telling you, that's the facts of what happened.
Then let, let me just be a little bit clear. I didn't, what I meant when I said I didn't have information to the contrary, I was talking about their reasons for removing it. That's all I was talking about.
Well, but, but Mrs. Roman, it was part of the, I was here when it was delivered. I, I had the same exact opportunity Mrs. Cohen had to go through the material. It did list abortion when delivered here.
I don't doubt that it was removed because somebody probably said, hey, you're going to deliver a copy to Ron Gould? You better make sure there's nothing about abortion in there. And they, because that's illegal. It's against statute to discuss abortion, like she said. Not that you can't talk about it if somebody's asking you a question, not that you can't answer them factually, but not to promote it. And they were promoting it by using it as a value.
Did anyone call the health department and ask them what had happened?
Now, we're not talking with the health department anymore. I tried to do that on the front end, and then they came in and took over our meeting. So I don't feel really obliged to go out of my way to help them.
Now, I did, I did see, I think we were speaking in your office at one point, and... and, um, we were talking about the abortion and, um, it was listed, I don't believe that it was promoted as a value, and I'm going on, I'm just going on my memory here, but I believe it was a discussion question for the students to talk about their values. And I agree that, um, it's probably best to just not talk about that because if a student is pregnant, their best recourse is through the medical community. They should not be relying on teachers to provide them with that information.
Okay.
Pregnancy does result in having a baby, though. I mean, that's the goal, you know, when you get pregnant, is to have a baby. That's how population continues.
So...
I don't think that going to hospital is a good reason to do it.
So, here you are, you have a baby. And now what? Do you raise it? Do you set it out for adoption? Do you abort it? I mean, are we gonna go to that next step or do we just stop to say, hey, it's done? Or are we gonna actually give them outs?
I think as a district, our role is to give them basic facts and education, but not advice on how to proceed.
Like you said that people were coming in and asking, I'm pregnant. Well, what are we telling them?
This, I do not know exactly what the school counselor said, says to them in a typical situation like that, other than she did tell me that the first question that they ask is, what makes you think that you might be pregnant? Okay? And then I actually do not know what happens beyond that.
Well, we should probably know what we're instructing our students on if they are coming on a regular basis.
Well, I think that...
Dr. Reese indicated that that was a problem with young pregnant girls, so I haven't seen evidence of that. I'm with my own eyes in this town, not that it's not happening, I just don't see a bunch of really young pregnant girls running around our town, so...
And I don't think she meant that. My recollection from the conversation was that, um, pregnancy, she acknowledged that pregnancy rates are declining, um, but when it does happen, she is one of the obstetricians in this town that provides care for pregnant teenage girls.
If the numbers hold at the high school, we should have in a population of 1,800 kids, about 40 pregnant at any given time?
Forty kids that are pregnant?
There was, it was 22 per thousand.
Yeah, 40. I don't think we have those kind of numbers at all.
Haven't even seen one young pregnant girl running around, level in 40.
Okay. So have we come up with, um, a working defin- definition of...
I don't think we have yet.
Okay.
Of what?
Sex ed.
I thought we were, um, you didn't like the adoption, prenatal and postnatal health part?
I just don't, I don't see why...
And I, I know I've said this before, I would like to see consent addressed in a sex education curriculum.
The concept of you give consent, it's...
Right, but we're not setting curriculum tonight, we're setting a definition.
Just a def...
I agree.
Okay, good, good point.
And is that part of reproductive health also if we're including addiction in that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, are you on the right page on this?
We're right up here in that blue part.
We're kind of bouncing around a little bit.
We're working off of the community members, the first one, the definition that a community member provided. We all seem to like that and we've edited and added and so forth. Okay, what, what else? Or what are we still disagreeing about?
So, I'm still not clear, are we putting the period after prevention or are we including the statement, adoption, et cetera?
I thought we were going to add the STIs or STDs.
Right, so it would be pregnancy prevention, STDs...
And STDs.
Um, prevention.
Yeah.
And STDs prevention.
I myself am not in favor of getting into providing girls, pregnant girls with choices when they get pregnant. I, I don't think that's our role to provide that information, but to direct them to somewhere where they can get that information, their doctor, their parents. What do we do now? If, you know, I'm, I'm willing to, if, if Nicole thinks that's really important to provide that, I'm not going to object. It's just, there's so much here already to teach.
Well, we could put it to a vote if we wanted to do that.
Right, right. Well, we could vote right now, I mean, and, and get it resolved. Nicole, I'm open to that if you want to include it, it's just, it's just gonna be more to include in the, in the limited amount of time we have to provide this curriculum.
I think we should include many more things if we're including adoption, prenatal and postnatal health, because that's none of our business.
It actually is our business. It's absolutely our business.
Well, also are the other things. Let's talk, let's talk about all the other methods of pregnancy prevention and the addiction. Let's spell out all those as well.
Let's spell it all out in part and detail.
So, so are we going to propose that we teach students about different methods of contraception?
Abortion.
Nicole says no, you say yes?
Well, then I don't know.
Pregnancy prevention?
Yes.
Would include contraception, I would assume?
Pregnancy prevention.
Well, yeah, but there's lots and I don't want that to be the course of, um...
Right.
...study. I don't want, I mean, there's two basic condoms and birth control. I don't know why we need to go further than that, if it's gonna be covered at all. That, why does it have to go any deeper than that? Again, 2018, everybody has a cell phone, everybody can go see their physician. Unfortunately for, in a lot of people's minds, there's no clinics in the area, so I don't know what we do for people who can't afford to go to the doctor and don't have insurance, but...
Well...
We can't be getting into those kind of details and giving any kind of advice, just like you said, right?
And then here's another reason, I'm gonna tell you right now, if we charge our, our staff with teaching this curriculum, they are not going to be comfortable with teaching that.
I know.
It's not realistic.
Teachers say they don't want to teach any of it.
So, they'll be comfortable with teaching prenatal and postnatal health and adoption?
No.
That's what I'm saying.
No, I'm talking about teaching about, uh...
Sex ed at all.
Different kind, they're not going to be comfortable, I think we're gonna run into a hurdle there, but not teaching about contraception, I, I don't, they're not gonna want to do that.
Yeah, but also prenatal and postnatal health, as long as we're just providing information, whether it's contraception or prenatal and postnatal health, that's all, we're only providing information. I don't think we should provide information about those things at all, like adoption and prenatal, or that's...
Oh, I agree.
So, do you think the girls that get pregnant should know that they need prenatal health?
Yes, but there's a difference...
Because that's very important to, and a lot of people don't think, that a lot of girls don't know that they need prenatal vitamins and that they need regular checkups and those kinds of things, so...
That's absolutely true.
Right.
But, um, I think that's addressed if you refer them to a doctor, then they discuss their specific circumstances, otherwise you run the risk, we're gonna talk about liability, if you provide them information about what they should do if they become pregnant and they rely on that information, they could make a mistake that results in some bad outcome and who then is responsible for that? I think, just play it safe. If you are pregnant or think you might be pregnant, go talk to your parents, go talk to your doctor, kick the ball to someone who, to someone with specific knowledge about that student and their health situation.
And that's what we should do with the entire sex ed program.
I don't agree.
I know.
Hey, John, I know you want to say something.
I, I'm a guy, so I'm probably wrong. I adopted four children. I was adopted. My sister was adopted. Adoption has changed. Adoption used to be something that happened because we didn't have abortion and we actually preserved life with it. We don't adopt kids the way that we used to anymore. We have people going out of the country to get kids because we can't fulfill the need for adoptable children in the U.S. As somebody who went to the foster, foster system to adopt children, I can tell you that there's a whole batch in there that nobody really wants and we took that route because honestly, 30, 40, 50, $60,000 for a kid is not what I'm gonna go throwing money into. It's a human life and somebody should be taking care of it. I hear that we wanna promote abortion if we promote adoption. We promote abortion as a, as a, as a country?
As a society.
Like nobody's business. If you don't want it, get rid of it. I like that adoption is in here, because we should be telling our students that there are options and not just abortion.
Okay, I'll, then I'll, I'll, I'm fine with, with the, with the adoption.
As far as prenatal health, you're talking about a teenage girl who's pregnant and probably knows she's pregnant well beyond her parents or her boyfriend or anybody else who's gonna find out. She's gonna probably try to keep that a secret until she absolutely can't keep it under wraps anymore, which is well into the second trimester. Are we now saying to her that we're not going to mention prenatal health?
Okay.
Within the, within the confines of this?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I, 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 I really think that we do our community a disservice, you know, unfortunately, these, these young ladies are gonna get into a situation, not all of them, but the very few that do. We should be making sure that at some level they're doing the right things and by referring them to a doctor, it may be much later in the game for that infant that we as a community should be looking out for at some level than, than anything else. Last thing, proposed definitions for sex education slash family life education. This is about family life. That's what our current policy reads. Now, we're calling it sex ed because that makes it so everybody can understand, but our policy currently says family life education. If we're gonna educate on family life, it doesn't have to be a deep dive, but some cursory mention of some of this stuff somewhere, I think bears some weight in this whole discussion.
So if, if I may read our board policy, which is based on statute, uh, it actually, there's a statement in our policy and the reason I just went and looked at it was because of the comment made about it's not legal to teach about abortion, but what our policy actually says is, "The district shall not endorse or provide financial or instructional program support to any program that does not present childbirth and adoption as preferred options to elective abortion. District shall not allow any presentation during instructional time or furnish any materials to pupils as part of any instruction that does not give preference, encouragement and support to childbirth and adoption as preferred options to elective abortion." I believe that's language from the statute.
Okay, all right. So, um, I'm, I'm fine with both of those. I, I, once the girl has the baby, then she's going to get instruction on postnatal health, so that I don't see that we need to go in there. And then, as John's, I like that term, we don't really need to take a deep dive into prenatal, prenatal health and care and that kind of thing, just, just explain...
They need to know it's important.
They need to know, yes, they do, and to...
And again, this is, this discussion will inform our policy revision and that's...
Okay. Um, Nicole, are you okay if we get rid of the postnatal health? Okay. Uh, what about you, Lisa and Arcana?
I, I don't agree, but that's fine.
Which one don't you agree with?
No, with the others, but that's fine. At least postnatal, I would even get rid of prenatal, but because it's not a, you know, we don't know enough about prenatal, but that's okay. I mean...
We're not instructing prenatal, we're not even gonna do any prenatal.
They cannot to wait. I mean, it's not really gonna be instruction at all.
So, it would be telling a class of, of girls that should you get pregnant, the most important thing is to consider prenatal health, because when you're pregnant, you're carrying another human inside of you. That's not going into what all that, but it, it's stressing the importance of this is part of the responsibility. If you get pregnant, that is number one, prenatal health. That's the first thing that you, you know...
Which, which means you now need to go to your parents and your doctor.
Exactly, and your doctor. Because it's important.
Okay, thank you, for those, both of you for the clarification. I appreciate that. Um, so are we, are we ready to have Mrs. Asier read this out?
So, I do still have one other question and I, because I've made my notes here in, in different cases. What I have noted here is that LHUSD, um, family life education in LHUSD refers to teaching students between fifth and 12th grade about human reproduction. This includes the male and female anatomy, intercourse, human gestation and birth. Family life education also includes reproductive health, pregnancy prevention, um, adoption, prenatal health and STDs prevention. That can go in any order, but that was the... So then I have notes on the side that, I'm not sure if we wanna clarify, that fifth grade would be limited to puberty and hygiene, that reproductive health includes addictions, sexting, cyber stalking, consent, the idea of, um...
Boundaries?
Yeah, well, the, yes, only yes means yes, et cetera.
Okay, okay.
Um, there was some discussion about the stranger danger, good touch, bad touch at earlier grades. I do, as we were talking about this, recall that, um, much of that stranger danger was discontinued because students most frequently are sexually assaulted by people they know and not by strangers.
By strangers.
And so they weren't being sensitized to that. Uh, I do not know, however, what we actually teach in that regard at the elementary level without talking about it as sexual touch, so...
Okay.
That's what I have so far.
So, uh, those of you who have recently arrived, what we're going to do is, Mrs. Asier just read a definition that we have somewhat finalized, but we haven't voted on it yet. We can vote on it tonight if someone were to make the motion. So this is the, your opportunity to stand up and what we'll limit the discussion to is this definition of our sex ed program, what, what, what will it encompass? So, um, I, I ask you to go to the microphone to speak, please say your name and, um, you are limited to five minutes and Mrs. Walter, wait, at the back of the room, will let you know as your five minutes is winding down. So, uh, here is your opportunity, speak loud and clear and make sure Mrs. Fleming gets your name, she may ask you to spell it for her.
Because you're only talking about the definition of sex ed.
Right now, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hi, my name is Chris May. I'm a high school student and when they were going in PE and they were talking about stuff, I wanna make sure that there's gonna be an opportunity for parents to receive the, the information first, to review what their, that they can go and see the information, because some of this stuff, I agree, the school district should not be involved in. If a student comes to them, they should be, if they don't feel safe talking to their parents, here's some resources, here's this person you can talk to, because otherwise you're getting into where I have, you're violating my parents' rights because you don't want me coming to the school district and saying, I want my faith taught in this school, I want this value, this value and this value done. And there should be opportunities for the parents to say, I don't want my child to be taught about this, I wanna be able to do that on my own, when I feel my child is able to, to go over the information step by step. A fifth grader is not gonna be able to understand, they don't have the development to understand all of this and society keeps trying to shove everything down their throat and not let a child be a child. Allow the resources to be there, say, here's some resources. If you don't want, you know, here's a, a person you can talk to. But again, I feel that if you guys get too descriptive, you are gonna open yourself up for a potential lawsuit, because if a student feels that that is advice and they act on it, are you guys gonna get into the psychological aspects of abortion or the psychological effects... You know, it, it needs to be very, what information you guys provide under this rule needs to be very tiptoed on. Because otherwise, it's going to open up a whole bunch of can of worms and you guys are going to be revisiting this a lot sooner than you want to. And there's going to be public outcry. I think it's great that there's very few students that are having pregnancies in the schools. I think that's great. I come from a major city. So I, I give this district and this town great credit for that. But I also ask you guys to look at caution of how far you are going to go into each of these descriptions. Because then you're going to end up having, like I said, psychological. Which one of you are psychiatrists that are ready to deal with this? What teachers or psychiatrists are ready to handle this? If you go too far down that road and get into something that these students are not ready to handle. So I'm not, you know, when you start getting into abortions, there, that's going to be something that affects them the rest of their life. When you start going into prenatal care, maybe have it just overall taking care of yourself. Proper exercise, diet, things like that, promoting that more. Whether they become pregnant or not shouldn't be what the, it's all about. It should be overall health. Are you getting enough exercise? Are you drinking enough water? Are you keeping up your electrolytes? Maybe that would be a better of approach than just focusing on a prenatal, postnatal health. Because we, we don't get out of our food that's been altered, we don't get enough nutrients as it is. Are you going to start going into all the vitamins that you should be going into? I think that you guys need to look at this definition and how far you want to open up that can of worms. I think that it should be that, yes, the difference, your body is changing. These are the changes that are happening. When I was in high school, I wrote a, a curriculum for a project. It wasn't to be a set curriculum. To this day, a high school uses what I wrote. I sent, I stuck straight by the facts. This is what happens. This is what happens to your body. This is what you will feel. That's all I did. And to this day, that school district, that school still uses what I had written up because I didn't say one thing or another. I just said, "This is what happens. This is what you will feel." So I ask you guys, please, please use extreme caution of how far you want to go down some of those roads. And allow parents to opt out, or at least see the material that would be provided. And allow them to opt out of certain things so that they can discuss those at home with their children in their own time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to clarify from what we, when we were talking about the fifth grade, we were not talking about anything other than puberty and.
Hygiene.
Hygiene.
In fifth grade.
And in terms of, um, opt out, I, it already is an opt in. It's a requirement.
Which is harder.
And that's better. Opt in. Opt out is useless. I mean, it really is useless because it does no good. So we did, it is opt in at this point right now. It's just, we didn't know about it. Parents knew about it as they got the forms that they had to sign. And that's how it will be. If we do anything, that's how it would be going forward, so. But I appreciate your comments.
And, and state law requires that the curriculum be available to parents as well.
But I would like to see curriculum available to parents on our website that they can pull up in the comfort of their own home and have a discussion with their kids. Not for them to have to come in, view one copy in hard form, and spend five hours making sure they approve of it.
Well, that was one of the things that Mr. Murray found on the Tucson website, was the curriculum, not only the topics, but every single lesson, the handouts, everything is posted on the website for review by grade level and by subject. And so that is something that would be a goal. One of the issues with the, with a purchased curriculum, however, is copyright. So, uh, because this was designed by the district and published by the district, it was able to be done.
One of the great things about that is hopefully that parents who know their children are going through that this week and next week will go onto the website and say, "I, I see today that you learned this. Can you, let's, can we talk about that?" And, and that's a really good conversation to have.
Um, I do want to alert, however, and this was part of the discussion, um, about having a policy on sex education because the law does identify certain things that must be discussed if we are going to teach. And one of the, um, areas, it says that all materials and instruction that discuss sexual intercourse shall stress that students should abstain until they are mature adults, emphasize abstinence as the 100%, stress that STDs are severe, have severe consequences. And then the, the other one which came up, and I want to address, is include a discussion of the possible emotional and psychological consequences of pre-adolescent and adolescent sexual intercourse and the consequences of pre-adolescent and adolescent pregnancy. So that is an area that we are going to have to address if we do develop a curriculum.
So the consequences of intercourse and of, um.
That's right.
Okay, pregnancy.
This is what the policy is.
Yeah, my, my name is Don Nelson, and I practiced OB-GYN here for, from 1972, about three years ago. So I've had my share of dozens of, probably more than that, teenage pregnancies and hundreds of cases of E D, of venereal disease, or STD, or whatever you want to call it. In the early days, I was the sex education department at the high school here because I was invited by numerous teachers, Jenny Anderson, and, et cetera, et cetera. The most recent, Dave, some of you know Dave, uh, what was his name?
Dave Cook?
Dave Cook. Anyway, I gave lectures on a annual basis in his, um, in his class. And, and I always start out by saying that if any of your parents or guardians are going to object to what I say, go to the library and Mr. Cook will not count you absent. What I covered was, was to some extent what you guys have talked about, STDs or venereal disease, contraception, um, didn't cover abortion. But I would go into detail about different venereal diseases, um, different ways of circumventing pregnancy, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And that is good in your curriculum. I think one thing you overestimate is the involvement of parents. A lot of these kids are living in cars in this town. There's a heck of a lot of poverty in this town that many of you may or may not know about. Um, a lot of parents don't want to get involved, they will not get involved. And that's, so a lot of these young girls especially, I think, are hanging out on their own. There's a tremendous variety of knowledge among the students in your high school population. Some are fairly knowledgeable and some really don't know a lot about anything. Uh, I usually would address mixed classes, boys and girls, sometimes all boys, rarely all girls. And, um, I, my MO was to let the kids write out any questions they had, didn't have to sign their name. Then the teacher would separate the questions off and I would answer them. Now, some of them were for shock value. And that's why I, to some extent, I think you'll agree, I got the respect of the high school kids because they would ask me questions and I would just very matter-of-factly give them an answer. And one of the first questions with a group of, of girls was, "Can I get venereal disease if I give my boyfriend a blowjob?" And I said, "Well, most certainly you can, because every once in a while, someone will come in with tonsillitis, you culture it, and it's going to rear." And you could have heard a pin drop. But the, the kids, now that girl obviously had been around, knew a lot, but some kids don't know diddly squat about anything. If you're going to set up a, an effective sex educa, or education, you've got to cover different forms of birth control. You've got to cover the ominous adverse event, it's a quality of venereal disease, and you've covered that. Abortion, I have my own views on abortion. Um, I'm, I'm proud of you if you have such, so few abortions in this, in this city or in this school because these are probably the ones you're aware of. Okay, I'll sit down. Um, I always use the, uh, I used to give a lecture on abortion. And, um, one of the, I, I knew a lot of this, because they get them from the American College of OB-GYN. In our country, there have been 61 million abortions. That's a lot of abortions. Okay, of those abortions, Black Lives Matter, 13% of our population is black. 28% of the abortions are on black women. So the 61 million abortions that have been performed, 28 million have been on black babies. So if, if Black Lives Matter, instead of picketing the, um, the police and so forth, they really should have picket the, okay, I'll just sit down. They should really picket the abortion clinics. One more statistic before I sit down. 20,000 to 1, remember that figure? Because 9/11, 2,838 people died in the Twin Towers? We'll up it to 3,000. 61 million abortions. Drop it down to 60 million. 20, 20,000 babies have been aborted for every person killed in 9/11. I think we should do everything we can to prevent pregnancy. That's where you come in with your education. I, I obviously am kind of anti-abortion and I will sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. So, um, based upon what you said, that what the state requires of us, oh, I probably, and somewhere in the definition, um, or maybe just in the policy itself, we could have a lead in about abstinence and that kind of thing, or we could put abstinence in the definition, what, I don't know what you suggest.
I, I think we, we have a definition and then ultimately, when we start talking about how we're going to teach it, we define very specifically what's included, um, which is why I've been making some notes on that. Abstinence is part of pregnancy prevention and already in, in law says it must be emphasized. Um, and I had another note on that and now I've lost it. Oh, I, on the, the same thing with the, um, the psychological effects of early intercourse would be included in reproductive health.
Okay.
And so, so I think some of those things that are already listed in the law are included. But we also, when we actually define what we're going to teach and how we're going to teach it, they will have to be delineated.
Now, let me clarify. I, I think it was John earlier tonight, before the meeting started, said that the state right now is revising the, the state's policy. So what?
Well, the state's, the state's revising its curriculum packages.
Okay.
So right, so right now, what they have online, um, is going to be replaced.
Okay.
I think it's next year superintendent, if I remember correctly. Um, but what we're starting to, to meander down is, is I think we're, we're headed in the direction of, uh, creating something internally. I think is a, at least from my take, is a better course of action.
Okay. So right now, we would need to, under the state law, we would need to include the emotional and psychological effects of, of early sex. So just so we're aware that we're required to do that by law. And maybe next year, we will be able to change that if we don't want to go to pens with.
What is it?
I know you're very expressive. Okay, so, um. You're very expressive, Nicole. Sorry, that is true.
Um, I think if you make a broad statement without going into a lot of detail or description, I think if you include sexuality or sex, sex acts to say, basic, or yes, anytime someone's genitals come into contact with someone else's genitals, mouth, or anus, that is sexual activity. Um, and here are the ways that you can protect yourself and protect your well-being and your partner's well-being. I think if you put that as kind of the basis of your educa, or yes, the basis of the curriculum, then you've included everyone. Because that is.
Well, I was understanding that's what we would have to explain under the STDs. That's a given to me, that you would have to explain that specifically. And it would apply then to every category.
Okay, I would, I would be okay with that. I just, um, when you put in as the exception, um, or one of the exceptions, homosexual practices, you know, if you're going to talk about STDs and STD prevention.
Okay, it can be lifestyle. I don't even know what practices means.
Okay.
I mean, unless it's talking about the sexual act. But I just want, don't want to cover all the lifestyles that are being covered out there. Because again, it goes back to if we're treating everybody, I, this, you know, and not covering these things doesn't mean that there's any, um, anything but love in my heart for people who are, feel this way or experiencing these things. But if we're treating everybody with respect, if we are, um, truly believing and buying into e pluribus unum, out of many, one, we don't have to break down all of these identity politics that are being used. Our kids are being used in this fashion. And so I don't want it to be misconstrued, but it, I don't want lifestyles taught. Because that undermines the family when you're teaching alternative lifestyles with the family sitting there saying, "Well, I don't want my kids to be taught that." So.
I, I would go along with that, that basically these are your body parts and this is how you keep yourself safe. And then you have everyone included in that.
So one of the, the language recommendations earlier was to just, um, to not promote any sexual lifestyles.
Yes.
And that might be the, the.
I think that would be less.
Uh, page there.
I just think.
It's on the flip side.
Couldn't we just limit it to the previous statement that you said? Wouldn't that take care of?
So lifestyles, not.
Yeah.
Not promoting.
Not promoting.
Any sexual lifestyles.
Any sexual lifestyles. Couldn't we just limit it and stop, stop there? Wouldn't that take care of, of everything?
Well, I don't know about promoting because that still leaves room for discussion. Just because you're not promoting it doesn't mean you're not going to have a massive class discussion on lifestyle.
What about advocate or cover?
What, what I, what I think we might want to think about is topics outside of the curriculum. We should have nurse counselor, somebody at the school, prepped, ready, trained, uh, to talk to people about. And it sounds like we already have young ladies coming to the counselor about pregnancy. Uh, so, so maybe that's the appropriate outlet for, uh, some of these, some of these questions. And the other thing is, is, is maybe things have changed a lot since I was a high school student. When I was a high school student, if I had to get up and I had to talk to anybody about anything, uh, involving sexuality, I would be very much under the desk, cowering. I wouldn't be up there talking about an alternate lifestyle or anything else in front of a class. Um, and, and maybe that might just be a better outlet, is to say, you know, some of these questions you may not feel comfortable talking to us about in a classroom setting. And, and that's fine. If you have any questions, the nurse or the counselor are available for you. And, and, because we know in our population, they're bound to come up. It's, it's not a question of, of that. It's how do we handle it inside the school? And how do we handle it respectfully for the student? Should it, should it be bounced about in front of their peers in a classroom? Or should it be handled in a, in a more, um, private manner because of the topic?
I like that approach. I think, um, if they have a potentially sensitive question to referring them to a counselor. And I also liked what Dr. Nelson said about, um, letting the students submit anonymous questions and using those as sort of jumping off points for discussion.
Okay. All right, then.
So back to the, the not list. Not something, any sexual lifestyle?
I don't even know if we need to at this point.
Covering.
I, I think you do say that we will not get into lifestyles, I think is.
Covering.
Covering?
She's looking for a word to. She's looking for a word, not what lifestyles.
But other than that, I...
Not exploring, not discussing, and I don't want to say that, but...
Discussing?
That's, yeah.
If a question came up, we would have proper to answer the question.
Right, right.
But we're not going to be covering.
How about not promoting?
Well, that's...
Not promoting any particular lifestyle?
Lake Havasu Unified School District does not promote any lifestyle, any sexual Curriculum will not include...
I like that.
I like that a lot.
Sexual lifestyles.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, okay, but if you say that, then you get back to the STD question. How are you supposed to inform students on how to keep themselves safe from STIs if you've taken all of this stuff off the table?
But we're not.
You just said instructions.
Well...
Well, I feel like, well, I like the original wording, "not promote." I think saying, "Our curriculum will not promote any specific sexual lifestyle." Or endorse?
Include. Oh, I include.
Our curriculum will not include lifestyle...
Any instruction on a specific lifestyle.
Lifestyle topics, because then that really kind of, and maybe there's a different way to word it, but it's the lifestyle topics is that what I don't want being discussed in class. It's the lifestyle. It's not specific answers to specific questions that may affect somebody of a lifestyle. It's the actual lifestyle, so, I don't know.
So how's that?
Right now, I have the curriculum will not include sexual lifestyles.
I, for one, would go along with that.
Okay. But do we need to...
Are you still asking for people to say something?
And just, and let's just finish this one little piece up, and then we will, okay? Do we need to include anything else in that list that we do not want taught? That we do not want included? Okay. Mrs. Kostner, would you like to speak?
Just for, I just want to make...
You've got five minutes.
I won't take five minutes. I just wanted to emphasize, you haven't addressed part of the major issue. Our students are people. They're part of families. And they should, part of your program should show some of the personal and family values, so we can encourage students in that regard. I think it's very important that they have mutual respect for one another. We don't have anyone coming in and talking about them as a wonderful creation of God, that they are a person, that they are, that human beings as such, we should aspire to find a loving, healthy, lifelong relationship, one in which one loves and admires the person for their personal attributes and their intellectual qualities, not just the sexual. This is part of the sexual thing. But they are a whole human being, and the psychological impact that it can have by engaging in a promiscuous relationship could affect them long-term. We need to have them realize the importance of moral and spiritual values as primary goals before considering engaging in physical, sexual relationships. I really feel that that's paramount in your education. I agree that they need to learn anatomy and physiology. I'm a retired RN. I've helped Dr. Nelson with a number of deliveries. When they're pregnant, it is a condition in which they are creating a new human life. It's not something that is casual, that we can forget about. They need to know that if they choose an alternative to abortion such, I mean, to adoption such as abortion, that they're getting rid of a human life that they have created with another human being who supposedly they love, or are they just engaging in this activity for fun? If they are doing it for fun, then they are not having the same responsibility for their actions. They're young adults now. They're not children anymore if they're engaging in this type of activity. It would be nice that they would feel that they would want to find that one person who they can truly relate to, and that if they do become pregnant, it would be according to their own family values and morals. Thank you.
I would like to, go ahead.
I'd like to say something. The children we are talking about are generally 18, younger than 18, all these girls who are getting pregnant. So in legal terms, they are not just raped, they are statutorily raped. And I don't know how many of them are prepared for what they have gotten to, and how many of them, because of consent or lack of consent, have just been raped.
Well, I would like to respond to Mrs. Kostner. I spoke for a while earlier in the evening, I think you hadn't arrived, framing our program with, actually, what it's all about and why we do this at all is because we want our students to become a responsible adult. I even advocated for calling the, this sex education is one of the things under becoming a responsible adult. And being a responsible adult, and I agree with you, is when you're ready to have sex, it's a real decision that you make, that at least it should be a decision, and not just fulfillment of an urge, that you're ready to... How do you know that you are a mature adult? Because you know, "I am ready to enter a committed relationship." I mean, you and I are talking a little bit about different things, but I think we're really talking about helping students become responsible and understanding what that looks like, what it is. It's self-control, it's the ability to make commitments to each other, all kinds, those are the kinds of things. But I don't know that we would put that in the definition, but we could have an introduction that includes many of the thoughts that you just said. So the rest of the board maybe knows where I'm coming from, along those lines. Okay? So anyone else who would like to speak to the definition? Okay?
Let me read what I think we have.
And see if anyone wants to make a motion.
Yeah, let's hear it again.
So, "Family life education, sex education at LHUSD refers to teaching students between 5th and 12th grade about human reproduction. This includes the male and female anatomy, intercourse, human gestation, and birth. Family life education also includes reproductive health, STD prevention, pregnancy prevention, adoption, and prenatal health. Family life curriculum will not include sexual lifestyles."
Or does not? Yeah, okay.
I would move that we adopt that as our definition of family life education.
Is there a second? I seconded. Okay?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Cox. Did you say STDs in that, when you read that?
Yes, I did. It was intercourse, human gestation, and birth also includes reproductive health, STD prevention, pregnancy prevention, adoption, and prenatal health. And then I have a whole list of things that are the details underneath some of those terms.
We have to have more discussion, because we have a motion on the floor, but you...
Yes, we may have more discussion.
The only change that I would ask for in that definition, the first reference to human reproduction, where it says, "Teaching students about, between the grades of 5th and 12th grade about human reproduction," I would change that to human sexuality.
So are you saying we would be teaching human sexuality in 5th grade?
No.
Okay. I want to clarify that.
No. 5th grade would still only be puberty and hygiene. It's just opening, or, yeah, widening the umbrella a little bit, to not just talk about sex in terms of human reproduction, because sex does not always result in reproduction, nor is it always intended to. I think if you say human sexuality instead, you've made it more broadly applicable.
So Webster's definition of that noun, sexuality, has two definitions. The first one is capacity for sexual feelings, and the second one is a person's sexual orientation or preference.
Okay. Well, then we could limit it. I think there's value in acknowledging that students have feelings and urges in high school. I mean, there's no, they all do. They don't, are not even sure of this awakening going on in their body and what's going on. But if we were to limit the definition of sexuality to feelings, I think it's important.
Well, maybe puberty. Maybe specify that.
I'm not going to amend my motion. And we have a motion on the floor.
And we're still discussing. So, and if that motion does not pass, I would offer a different alternative. Instead of human reproduction, human sexual well-being.
That seems so inappropriate for 5th grade.
No, it's, she said not 5th grade. That wouldn't be 5th grade.
Oh, I misunderstood then. What do you talk? "Family life education, sex education at Lake Havasu Unified refers to teaching students between 5th?" Isn't that how our, how it's going?
Yes, to allow for a specific curriculum for puberty and hygiene.
In 5th grade, and then, you can phrase it so that if you want to talk about sexual feelings, then that is later in the curriculum.
Instead of reproduction, could you say reproductive systems?
How would that help?
Can we, can we type it up?
No, it's really hard to do.
Can we do that? Can we pull up one of the, I'm sorry, but...
You've got to work back from the open.
Yeah.
And just to make sure we're all on the same page, just because this definition would apply to 5th through 12th grade, we would still have to review and approve a curriculum on an individual basis.
Different grade levels.
Exactly. So 5th grade, we could, and I would be supportive of sticking to a program that just focuses on puberty and hygiene.
Well, but it actually introduces a contradiction in what we're doing. If we insert the word sexuality in there, and we've got to be forward-thinking, when we insert the word sexuality, we insert the definitions of sexuality.
Right. And here, the definition of sexuality is "the combined physical, intellectual, emotional, social, and spiritual characteristics of an individual that includes sex, gender, identities, and roles, sexual orientation, eroticism, pleasure, intimacy, and reproduction."
Sorry, where is that motion from?
This is actually from a source, medical institute, that's actually a source on your article, medinstitute.org.
So regardless, in one breath, we say that we will do sexuality, and then we limit that out when we get down to our exclusions. It's actually a contradiction in what we're doing for our definition of what we do.
Okay. And what do you think about my other alternate as sexual well-being?
Sexual well-being.
Or would you rather discuss it if, your motion might pass?
I would ask you a different question. We've been here for a little over two hours discussing this, and we've gone back and forth as a board, and we've taken some public input. We've arrived at what I thought was a consensus, and here we are at the point of the motion and the second, and we've got the action item on the floor finally after a little over two hours, and now we're going to change it again. I'm just wondering why it is so important, after all of the discussion and input and the nuancing to get here, why we're going to change it again?
Well, it's a complex topic, and so I just want to make sure that we've considered our options. And I do feel like human reproduction, as I said, it's, I think the scope is a little bit too narrow. So that's my, I mean, again, if your motion passes, that's fine.
Well, it's not really, because it's not just production, it's STDs. Well, you know, teaching them how to protect themselves against STDs isn't talking about reproduction, because we're including all kinds of different ways that you can get an STD, and those don't have to do with reproduction. So I think we're really being inclusive of everything that you wanted to make sure that we were addressing, but I think we need to be real careful. The words have meanings, very specific meanings, and I don't want to insert any word that is going to have a secondary meaning, and sexuality does.
Okay, I'm taking sexuality off the table as an option.
Okay.
But I would like to talk a little bit about sexual well-being as an option.
And what does that mean for you?
Well-being, it's a little bit broader. So it's, well-being would include your physical, psychological health in terms of sexual relationships. And then, the reason that I like kind of that umbrella is that then it gets down into the specifics that we would talk about. The anatomy, intercourse, gestation, reproductive health, pregnancy prevention, STD prevention, all of those different topics would all fall under the umbrella of sexual well-being.
So the World Health Organization defines sexual well-being as "sexual health is a state of physical, mental, and social well-being in relation to sexuality." It requires a positive and respectful approach to sexuality and sexual relationships, as well as the possibility of having pleasurable and safe sexual experiences, free from coercion, discrimination, and violence.
And I could live with that definition, and I would go for that.
I couldn't. I could not live with that definition. And that's not what we're supposed to be doing. We're not supposed to be promoting that. I thought that we had all just agreed on that, that we weren't promoting that.
It's not specifically promoting any one lifestyle.
What he just read? Well, no, not any one lifestyle, but it's promoting something beyond the facts.
I don't agree.
Marsha?
I haven't made any changes except of what I read out. So underneath where it says proposed, in blue, that's what we have.
So with regard to the definition of the sexual well-being and the World Health Organization, I want to make sure that, and I had sent some information to Superintendent Asirin, I sent one other article today, and I don't know, okay. It was prefaced in the information I'd sent yesterday, but it was some information on a report on CICUS, which is, it's the Sexual Information and Education Council of the United States, and their connection with the Kinsey Institute and Planned Parenthood and ASSET, A-S-S-C-T, which is the information that you had asked me to provide, and I hope that you had a chance to look at, well, you probably didn't have a chance to read it all, but I did put that together for you. But CICUS works with the World Health Organization, and they helped to come up with that definition. And CICUS is one of the organizations that has put together these box cutter-type programs that are being put out there. So I just want to make sure that you understand that they're all connected, because CICUS works with World Health Organization, the Academy of, the American Academy of Pediatricians, the American Association for Health and Physical Education, the American Association of Marriage and Family Counselors, the American Association of Sex Educator Counselors and Therapists, and World Health Organization. So that definition can be very troubling.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Cox. You said you sent me something yesterday also?
I sent you something this morning, this report.
I haven't received anything from you, and I've checked my email up to about 3:45.
Okay, really early this morning.
Okay. Can you resend it? It may have come from your...
Okay. So...
I didn't receive anything yesterday either.
We have a motion on the floor.
And I'll call the question.
Terry? Terry?
John Maston?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
No.
Or Tiana Aliar?
No.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you for that robust discussion. We at least have gotten something done. Now, we are going to move on to the survey, and Mrs. Asier, did you have something you wanted to present about the survey?
Yes. So, this, where it starts on the page, it says possible survey inclusions. I really didn't remove too much. I just changed the format a little bit and included the possible survey inclusions. So, it's like, um, thank you. I don't have numbers on mine. And so, at the front of it, I just included the code. We do not need to include the code. I have it there. And then there's, at the very bottom of that first page, there is an introductory statement. And then highlighted was, was waiting on the definition. And then looking at answering questions, providing any additional information, there were several suggestions in yes-no format as well as grade level. I took out the original one that I had, which was, had grade level like K-8, 912, or something like that. I don't recall now, but, so these are all of the things that were brought up by board members, as well as some of the things that were on there previously in a different format. So, it's wide open, starting from what questions should be included, but I think maybe the first part of it should be, here's the definition. What is it we actually want to know from parents? And then talk about what questions should be included.
Okay.
So, then will we throw out some of the questions that would violate with our, violate our definition? So, we don't really need to ask then if LHUSD teaches students about alternative sexual orientations? If we, if we've already decided.
Right.
Right.
If we've already decided that we're not going to promote.
Correct.
I don't know. I worry that then, if you're giving students information about how to prevent an STD, and you give them information about different sex practices, that that could be seen as somehow promoting an alternate sexual orientation.
Well, I, I was hoping that the survey questions wouldn't, I'll just say, kind of get down in the weeds and not be extremely specific like that, that they would be more, more general questions. And, and few questions. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, just in, in terms of, Mrs. Ramon, your question, I think you stated it really well, that certain types of contact are how you can contact, can contract asexual disease.
Okay.
And so, as we talked about, that this will be information that we're providing, information-based. As we get to the point where we're actually developing and publishing the lessons, that, that will show that we're not promoting.
And you have to cover all those things regardless of sexual orientation, so I just don't see how it's going to be a problem in getting the information out.
So, I'm sorry, Mrs. Cox, I interrupted you.
No.
I didn't want to lose that.
Thank you. I'm glad you did.
What grade should sex ed be taught? We already determined a lot of this.
Yeah, I mean, we've already determined some of that, so I don't see the point of putting those questions on the survey.
And then the question maybe is, do we still need to do a survey? If we've defined it, I don't know. What questions do we still need to ask?
Well, that's, that's a thought.
I, for one, would not mind not doing a survey. That, let me rephrase. I wouldn't mind if we just borgo doing a survey.
Maybe if we thought we wanted to do a survey, we could do something about, have you, have you ever, if you've gone, have you gone to Lake Havasu High School? Have you participated in this class? Did you find it valuable? I, I mean, I don't have any feedback whatsoever from our students about whether that class ever made any impact on them, what they got in ninth grade. I would, I myself would like to know if, if it had any impact on them.
I've, I've had a few different conversations, and I had one that kind of stood out for me, and that's actually why I included body image in my original discussion about what it should include. But it was a mother and daughter, and they were talking about how the Smart Girls program that she participated in really opened up some good discussions with her parents about body image issues that she was having, that it really helped her through a rough patch. So, that was, I know that's just one piece and an anecdote, but that was one piece of information that I received.
Well, that's about, that's valuable information to know.
Well, something that Mike just brought up was if, if we're talking about maybe what the details would look like of reproductive health and pregnancy prevention, so maybe that's where we get into some of the questions for the survey, is what should those include? So, we're talking about reproductive health. There's a question in here about, about sexting and.
Cyber stalking?
Yeah, somewhere. I've lost my spot. There we go. The influence of sexting, porn, social media, doxing, et cetera. So, you know, maybe that's one of those questions. Or when we talk about pregnancy prevention, contraception, which is one of the listings on here, what should contraception include? Birth control?
And then they could, mhm. And then we could, that would be valuable information to get from the community, I think. I'm taking the temperature of the community on this.
It's your discussion, I'm just.
Yeah. But I mean, that.
I threw a wrench in the wheel, I didn't mean to do that.
I would almost prefer not to have to do the survey if you gave me my druthers. But that's because we've been here for two hours, and it's going to take another two hours, but that's not the right approach. Go ahead.
Surveys are always interesting. You know, one of the things that I said when we first brought up the survey was, one of the questions was, was there a way to limit how many times an individual responds? Because you can, you can certainly, if we use Survey Monkey or one of the normal.
But we, you know, we, I'm not going to say we put the cart before the horse, but since we didn't do it that way, I think Archie's question is a really good question. I don't know what, something interesting, like what did you get from your program? I mean, that's interesting, but what are we going to get to work with? I'm not sure we're going to get anything.
And again, my only suggestion would be then now to look at the detail, because we've used some terms that we haven't gone into detail with. Maybe we want to find out from your community, what do they see as appropriate in the detail of those? That's.
That would be about all that we would gain, and, and I think we're still on the policy leg of this. We're not into the curriculum, and in my world, policy is broad and curriculum is finite. So, we're at the broad brush stroke, and I, and I think once we get to curriculum building, I think at that point, I think the survey will become much more germane.
But I'm interested in the superintendent's recommendation.
So am I.
It would be, you know, do you think it would be valuable? That valuable to us on these specifics?
I think, actually, as Mr. Maston stated, that's going to be important as we begin to develop the curriculum. I don't know that we need that before we do the policy.
Okay.
That's, that's just.
And I'm, I'm fine with that. So, do I hear a motion to work on the survey now, or, or do I hear a motion to do the survey? Or, I mean, we don't need a motion.
I think you should discuss.
It was a discussion point.
Okay. So, do we proceed then with the survey questions? I need to get some feedback from all four of you. I am fine not putting the survey out at this time. That's where I am, so if each one of you would give some indication.
Now that the definition is final, I would like, all I'm really interested in knowing is if parents would like a parent guide developed. You know what I'm saying? To use. And that would be K-12. That would be something K-12. These are the things in kindergarten that you should probably talk with your kids about. You know what I'm saying? Starting with.
But do we, do we really need a survey? I mean, I would say yes, let's do that.
I'm just saying that's all I'm interested in knowing at this point. I mean, there was a lot of questions before, but now that we've defined, or at least we've written the definition, I, I need to, I need to take a screenshot of that before I leave.
Send it out as well.
Okay.
I just don't think we need to survey parents. I, I think as a board, we can make the decisions. That would be a very wise thing to do, is to provide a handbook.
I agree with that. I don't think, I, I think the survey has sort of limited value, and like Mr. Maston said, I welcome input and feedback from the community and parents, but I do think that they already have different avenues to express their opinion at these meetings or through email, and I know we've received some feedback from the community already that's dispersed to all of our board members. So, I think that that is at least as meaningful as a survey result would be.
And so, then the, the next question would be if we're not going to do a survey, which is, is at least not at this time, and maybe until we're going to look at curriculum, is what would be the next step? So, we had talked about possibly having a work session on November 5th to begin the policy language discussions based on information gathered, but I think that we can begin those policy language discussions now based on our definition. So, the question would be, when do you want to have the policy back for discussion?
I think we need to define all the things that we just listed, define the details like you.
Define the details?
Mhm. Of what, what it means when we say that we're going to teach about female, male, anatomy, intercourse, human gestation. What is it that we're, that we're hoping to teach about those things? Doesn't have to be super detailed, but I think we need to be clear on that.
So, then.
So, do we want to have then the board submit definitions and do like we did with this process, is, you know, collate them and?
I'm really concerned that we're going to get bogged down if we're going to go through every single one of these terms and define it. Some of them, I mean, do you really need a definition of birth? I feel like some of these are very self-explanatory, and I don't say that to be sarcastic either. I'm just saying that a lot of these, that these terms are self-explanatory. We, we know what is meant by human gestation and birth and, and some of these different things.
So, you would submit to the Webster's Dictionary definition of each one of those?
Only if I look them up first.
Exactly.
How, how about if we take all the topics that we really want to cover and which are covered in by the state and by all these things like prevention of pregnancy, prevention of STDs, and, you know, the major topics, and then we go over what we are going to cover under each of those.
Right.
Instead of worrying about this language, this is a definition, but let's now focus on what we want to, let's discuss the broad subjects that we're going to cover, and then the next time, we can go into the detail of, okay, this, but not that, under those.
Right. So, are you suggesting that we do that at this meeting?
We can come up with the broad, like five or six things, like, you know, what were they?
Reproductive health, the STD prevention, and probably pregnancy prevention would be the three biggies?
No, so what about STDs, right? Then pregnancy prevention, then, they're all in these things we've been reading all day, all I've been reading. Can you think of all the other things?
Well, let me, what if I ask the audience, looking at those terms up there, what do you think would be good for us to further define or clarify?
My, my recommendation is that we make sure that we agree on definitions of words, because words mean things. Secondly, that we go from our definition now into a policy, because now that we've defined what we're going to do, we need to have a policy about how we apply this definition to what we're going to do. And then, once we have a policy, we can then develop a curriculum of what we're actually going to do against that.
Okay, but are we prepared to start on that tonight?
I don't think that we, that we go much further than a definition tonight.
Okay.
I, my advice would be that we should probably look at this and say, okay, do we agree on the definitions? And I think what we should do is, is we should build a consensus on what those definitions are. And, and I was, I was half kidding about Webster. I, I think that we really need to get to the common definitions of, of what some of these terms are, and Webster's is a great place, I think, to start. Pass it around in, in, in an email to each individual board member, and if there are objections, the objections can come back, and we can, we can discuss that at a special session down the road. But, but I, but I think once we have consensus on what the language actually means and that, and that we know what we're talking about moving forward, from there, then we can develop a really cohesive policy out of it.
Does anyone have? Go ahead.
I was going to say, I would be happy to, to look up the Webster's definitions and certainly include the things that we've already talked about under phrases, and then get them out to everybody for review, so that you can't share that with each other, but then you could.
We can feedback to you.
Exactly. We had tentatively talked about November 5th as a work session.
We could iron that out at the work session.
We have fall break coming up. We have a special meeting on the 15th for the AFR, is that correct? And for the board's evaluation. And so, then we have our regular meeting on the 22nd, so.
Bing, bang, boom, we're there.
The 5th will be coming very quickly, so. Does that work for everyone?
Mhm.
Okay.
I mean, I suggest that it be a special session, so if you want to take active, we'll be able to.
Yes.
Yes.
Definitely.
What time? Five? Four? Five? Six?
Well, I don't work.
It is going to work or is not?
I'm sorry. Four o'clock works for me. I don't think that works for other people.
I'm good, I don't get it.
Four o'clock works for me.
I'm good.
Okay, four, four o'clock.
And I will work on that and get that out to you this week.
Very good, yay. All right, then.
Thank you.
Good suggestion, John. We had to have a starting point, and Webster's is a good starting point. All right.
Can I make one more suggestion, too?
Sure.
Since we're all suggesting things. So, the Cleveland Clinic article that, that was sent via Nicole, I thought was very informative and very straightforward, and it might be a good sort of jumping off point when we reconvene to use that as a platform.
Awesome. Hey.
All right, then. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Tiana Aliar?
Yes, yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Thank you all for, who came tonight and who spoke tonight. Thank you.